On our new business list, it's a very, very brief business item. It's been on the agenda for a while and I was hoping we'd get support on that. We can get through it quickly and get it off our plate. Mr. Scott Graham can help us with that. I'll go ahead and, we okay with that? Okay. So, item D4 is introduction of first reading of ordinance number 596 adding chapter 14.42 to the Morro Bay Municipal Code, providing a streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Mr. Graham, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Irons, members of the council. You have before you this evening introduction of a new ordinance, 596. It's for solar permit streamlining. It does add chapter 14.42 to the municipal code. It is in response to legislation passed in September of 2014, specifically Assembly Bill 2188. The bill requires local agencies to implement an expedited permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems. So, that's going to be for solar energy systems and solar water heating systems, although we don't get a whole lot of the latter. The focus of the requirement is to allow permits to be issued for small residential solar facilities over the counter. So, you come in, you have your packs put together, and we've been able to issue you the solar permit over the counter there and then that it would be a follow-up, single inspection, whereas in the past it's been a two-inspection process for those. So, again, streamlining the process of installing solar. To conform to the permit process, one of the requirements of the ordinance is to conform to the permit process outlined in the California Solar Permitting Guidebook. And to place solar permit application materials online, we've done that on the cities, on the building portion of the city's website, Building Division, to accept electronic permit submittals. Unfortunately, right now, the only way we have to do that is via email or fax. I guess we can get faxes in some way, shape, or form. But we will have City Works in the future and that will allow for online submission of permit applications. And then finally, it requires local jurisdictions to adopt standard plan and checklist requirements. We have those requirements on the city's website and it's, the system's active now. So, again, if you conform to that submittal checklist, we issue you the permit over the counter. Our permit tech has been trained to walk through the permit checklist with the applicants and hopefully those applicants, all of the new solar, all the solar companies that have been coming in since we've implemented this, which was back in August, we've been telling them we have the new submittal checklist. We sort of talked to all of the other jurisdictions out there to see what they were doing, so we were doing something similar. So, the solar companies would have similar permitting processes and submittal requirements as the other jurisdictions in our county. And then finally, if you're submitting through the electronic version, which is via email or fax, then we would be reviewing that and issuing that permit within a three-day period and we're adhering to that, although I don't think we've gotten any electronic submittals as of today. And then again, to utilize that single inspection. The ordinance was supposed to be adopted into place on September 30th of this year, so we are late. But we did, again, implement the parameters of what was required by the Assembly Bill 2188 back in August, so we were timely as far as implementing the program. And then finally, the recommendation is to introduce the ordinance by title only, waive the full reading of ordinance 596 for title, to a amendment for title 14 of the Morro Bay Municipal Code, adding chapter 14.42, providing streamlined permitting processes for small residential rooftop solar systems, and finding the amendment exempt from SEQA. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. Any questions, Christine? None? Any questions to my right? I would open up for public comment for anybody that'd like to speak to this item. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back for discussion. Any discussion on this? Scott, thanks for your bringing this forward. I know it took us a while to get here and I know you've been working on it, so thanks very much. Yep. I would just make a motion, a staff recommendation, introduction, first reading of ordinance number 596, adding chapter 14.42 to the Morro Bay Municipal Code, providing a streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems, and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So, thanks. Yeah. So, motion by Mayor Irons, a second by Mr. Heading. And any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries. Okay, great. That concludes item D4. Thank you very much, Scott. Appreciate it. And then we'll move back to our regular agenda item in order of item D1, status update of memorandum of understanding for the potential purchase of Rancho Colina property as the city's preferred water reclamation facility. And we will look for, let's see, who's our lead? Mr. Buckingham?
I am, thanks.
Thank you.
So, good evening, council. This presentation is to provide you and the community an update on the status of the MOU for the potential purchase of the property at what you have determined is the preferred Rancho Colina site for the new Morro Bay Water Reclamation Facility. Our recommendation is you receive and file this update, provide direction as you see fit. No fiscal impact to receiving the update, of course. The, we'll say that the MOU, we believe, should be in place prior to significant spending on a specific site. There's clearly spending that always needs to happen to determine if a site is appropriate. But before we start spending significant amounts of money, for example, in the facility master planning process or the environmental process, we want, on a specific site, we want to have an MOU in place. And so, you're aware expenditures to date have been almost completely transferable to another Morro Valley site. So, the work that the program management team has done, work that facility managers have done, is all transferable. It's sort of background work on flows and other analyses to determine basically what kind of plant would be required or could be required, but has not been site-specific except in investigating particular sites. Quick background, in January, Morro Bay identified Rancho Colina as the preferred site and the Cayuga Sanitary District agreed to partner with us. From January to April, we focused on getting the fatal flaws analyses going, getting the program management, the facility master planning, and the governance consultants or MOUs in place. And there was also, as you, I'm sure, will recall, a significant amount of effort during the January to April period on the relationship with the CSD. During that period, there was some work on an MOU for the Rancho Colina site. In late April, you know that CSD withdrew from the partnership with Morro Bay and at a council meeting two weeks later, you passed a resolution directing or determining to build a Morro Bay owned and operated water reclamation facility. Since then, there's been significant progress toward construction of a WRF. The fatal flaws analysis is essentially complete. We're awaiting two of the actual written reports, but all indications are there are no fatal flaws. Those reports will inform the facility master planning process a little bit, but so that process is essentially complete. Our program management team is onboard and working. The facility master planning team is onboard and working. The environmental review, you approved the contract for environmental review recently. They are ready to start work, although we've held them back from starting work until we have a better handle on an MOU and a site. And the public outreach is ongoing. Two weekends ago, there was a significant public outreach event and there is another one Thursday night of this week. MOU's negotiation, during that summer period that I just described where we were getting a lot of things moving forward for the WRF, staff and the property owner worked on the MOU. Staff reworked the MOU in the midsummer, really based on some great input from the council, especially and others, working into it a firmer commitment on the part of the property owner to sell should the, should the property, to sell to the city for an appropriate price, should the property pass the environmental review process. That MOU document, the draft document, includes attachments that show the site layout, which land we would be, the property owner would be agreeing to sell, a legal description for those. So, the MOU is, must have along with it, an agreement on actually what land we're talking about, not just some land at the Rancho Colina site. Recent work on site planning by our facility master plan team resulted in the property owner raising some concerns about the siting of potential, of WRF facilities at the potential Rancho Colina site. We all heard that last council meeting, that was good to hear. And so, where we are now in October, the staff and the property owner continue to work together on an MOU. The draft MOU without a property description, which obviously is essential to the MOU, was communicated to the property owner October the 14th. He received that and he and his family and attorney are reviewing that. For the past two weeks, city officials, some of you and staff have held four meetings with the property owner, some of those including the property owner's family. The owner provided initial feedback yesterday on some sort of deal parameters on site selection essentially within the Rancho Colina property. And that, as I just said, that feedback includes some siting details. Staff is meeting tomorrow morning to work through those, to consider those, and we'll continue negotiating and working with the property owner in hopes that we will all reach an amicable memorandum of understanding that will cite the WRF at the Rancho Colina site. So, some next steps, we're continuing to work on the siting options. Because of SEQA, the importance of looking at alternate sites, staff is beginning to some preliminary planning for alternate sites in the Morro Valley. An added benefit to that is it could be an optional location if we can't reach consensus at Rancho Colina. So, we are hoping to reach consensus at Rancho Colina, but we owe it to the SEQA process to do a good alternative analysis. And so, we are, we are starting to look at, assess some alternate sites, which could become optional sites, should we not be able to reach a consensus with the property owner at Rancho Colina. Staff is carefully watching our expenditures related to specific sites during this period. We are ensuring that site-specific dollars are not wasted. Sort of hard to describe it. Clearly, it requires some financial outlay to assess a site, to do the geotechnical analysis, the biological, the archaeological. And so, if we, as we look at some alternate sites, it will require some outlay of fund to assess those sites. But what I'm saying is we are very carefully watching the expenditure of significant funds, for example, in the facility master planning process, especially in environmental, that are tied to a specific site until we have a memorandum of understanding from the property owner at that site, be it Rancho Colina or another. We should have a better feel for the Rancho Colina site at the November 17th council meeting, perhaps before then, but that's the next regular council meeting. And so, I would recommend that we may want to bring you an update at that council meeting on the status of the MOU. So, that completes my presentation and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for the report, Mr. Buckingham. And with that, we can start with council questions, open up for public comment, and then come back for discussion. And look to my right, Mr. Heading.
Thank you, Mr. Buckingham, for the overview and review and presentation. I appreciate it. Some questions. I'm trying to recall and I looked back over my information. Has the council ever reviewed or seen a draft MOU? A draft MOU in the format of an MOU?
I provided one to, I think, all council members week before last, after the last council meeting.
Okay. And that would have been the first time that we had seen any, as far as I can recall, I have no record of seeing any MOU prior to that, if we indeed did get one, which I would believe you.
Yeah, I don't recall. John, do you recall? I don't believe so the staff has been working at.
Okay. The, the process that you're going through right now, I think you indicated involved some siting details. Is there any reason we can't hear or discuss what those are at this time or is that something you would rather not do for some reason?
So, we've been looking at the Rancho Colina site, sort of south of the, of an east-west road. And except, many of you walked that site actually, or one area of that site. We've, as I said, recently met with the property owner and had several meetings through the last week and a half and as several of you did. And yesterday, he provided some input, as we asked them to, on what area of the Rancho Colina property would be, would be most amenable, would be agreeable to them. We just received that yesterday and staff is meeting tomorrow morning to go through that.
Okay. Okay. And then, your term, carefully watching the dollars, I appreciate that very much. I think that's extremely important, obviously. As I recall, the lost opportunity cost on a daily basis for delays in this project is somewhere in the area of between $4,000 and $5,000. Is that correct? Every day that we delay actually moving forward with it, it's about over $5,000?
Basically, $130,000 a month. So, I think we did the math on this at another meeting and came up with $4,000 a day or $4,000 to $5,000 a day.
Right.
And that's, that's the cost based on existing escalation and construction costs for delays in the project if we don't meet the five-year deadline.
Okay. Do y'all consider that significant?
Absolutely.
Okay. Has WRFCAC ever reviewed the MOU?
No.
No, not yet.
Why? I'm curious as to why. All other details of the project that I look back on had been reviewed by WRFCAC. Why not the MOU in terms of input? I'm just curious.
Typically, you would work with a property owner on property negotiations till you come to a final draft of that and then share that with your advisory bodies and city council while you're still kind of going back and forth on the finer points. It's very difficult to negotiate property in a public meeting.
Okay.
It may be helpful, if I may. Also, there's two aspects to the MOU. There's the aspect of what the project will entail and the legal language that's necessary for the parties to come to an agreement as to what they're agreeing on. The MOU that is being discussed in terms of the analysis sort of been done by staff is on that legal part. And it's not really the kinds of things that the advisory bodies and the council need to see before that's all done between the negotiators and then brought to you or the advisory body for final look.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. I do. Thank you. That's all the questions I have for right now. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, John. No?
Yes, just briefly, we have talked about various acreage size needs for the city and I just want to confirm that we are going to, one of the concerns is the corp yard and we've been clear in the recent meetings that we are separating that out. If it were to be carried over and there is space at any of the potential properties, that that wouldn't be, that would be a different aspect to the project, not part of the sewer or water funds, only to the level that it actually is appropriate, but almost like an add-on. So, I just want to confirm that we will be looking very closely at what the actual corp yards needs are as far as space. We do recognize that it needs to be rebuilt, but that there could be other options outside of the WRF site. Or if it is at the WRF site, it may not necessarily need to be at the acreage that it currently is.
Yes, absolutely. I would describe sort of the hierarchy of needs as the water reclamation facility is the must-have, essential. The renewable energy component is a, would very much like to have based on council goals and the corp yard is need to have somewhere, but not necessarily at that site. And so, that is a consideration, but not a primary motive, or you know, a primary litmus test for any site.
Just to add on to that, the elegance of locating a corp yard with your wastewater treatment plant, is there many functions to operations that are the same? You have locker rooms at a wastewater treatment plant, you have locker rooms at a corp yard, you have vehicle storage at a wastewater treatment plant, you have vehicle storage at a corporation yard. So, be able to combine those facilities and maximize the cost-effectiveness of both is really why that was recommended to be in the mix.
And to add one more thing, to answer your basic question, is it being looked at in the facilities master plan as a programming element? Yes, it is. Among the things we're trying to figure out is how much space in a design. At this point, we've really only looked in very preliminary terms, what happens if you move the corp yard over? But we haven't gone to the detail yet to know how you can co-locate things or make things a bit smaller. But those are questions we are examining and that all relates to how the MOU shakes out, to the city's ability to do various functions and frankly, also in the upcoming workshop and also feedback we've heard from the public relative to trying to hone in on community priorities as we move forward within the facility master plan.
Christine?
I have two questions. The easier one maybe to explain is this Thursday's workshop that we're talking about having that the public is invited to at 6:30. Is that it? Fets Hall?
Correct. 6:30, Fets Hall.
And it'll be on, AGP will carry it live as well.
That is my understanding at this point.
Okay. Yes.
Correct.
So, thank you. Just because everyone's really listening to us now, so you might as well do a little plug for that while they're on topic. My understanding, discussions with some staff have been that we're going to talk about a little bit there, introduce the topic of architecture, but you know, not a, just kind of a lightly touch on what would structures, any structures, look like on that property. Am I right about that or misguided?
No, that's correct. I think, just very briefly, the workshop, the intent is to get public input on what we should be thinking about in terms of the facility, in terms of priorities, to give feedback to what we've done, issues that we've heard already and want to make sure we've captured everything else. That said, one focus will be on what we've heard is a very important consideration among neighbors and the property owner for that matter, and that's the look and compatibility issues associated with the facility. So, we do intend to dive into the architectural details, not, we haven't designed anything, but more to present ideas out there for people to feed back off of. So, that's an important aspect. People will get a feel for what you can do or how things have been done elsewhere.
Okay. And the model that we would be using for our new facility on any property, anywhere that we land it, would not be the current existing facility?
That is a fair statement. The look of it will be modernized and certainly upgraded in terms of visual.
Okay. So, we will not be replicating the current plant on a new site?
Correct.
Okay. Great. And then the other question I have, just for those of us who, me included, who don't live within the SEQA process as much as others, let's just say briefly and for the general public, when on Mr. Buckingham's slide, he states, "SEQA," it's under next steps, "SEQA, staff to begin preliminary planning for alternate Morro Valley site." Can someone, whoever, oh, okay, Mr. Rickemback chooses himself. Could you just explain that this is, my understanding is that going through a SEQA process does force us, let's say we found the perfect property, we still have to go through the SEQA process, makes us look at or compare to some alternative out there. Could you just, you know, simply as possible, explain what that means?
Sure. In the SEQA process, you're looking at your disclosing impacts, what happens with a project. One of the requirements under SEQA, when you do an environmental impact report, which we'll be doing, is you have to look at alternatives to the project to fulfill the project goals. You have to, among those alternatives, consider perhaps different designs or perhaps different locations. And they're all intended to minimize one or another environmental impact. So, as part of the process, we do have to do our due diligence on locations. We have looked at locations through the options report and although we came to a conclusion to look at a preferred site, that by no means shuts the door on any of the sites we considered before or for that matter, any other sites we may want to consider from this point on. We do need to consider other sites and that's part of the analysis to help you come to a conclusion to make a recommendation on the right site.
Okay. Great. Really well done. Now, I finally understand it. I'm just kidding. Okay. That would be my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to get, clarify a couple of points, just for those who may have been following some of the slides. And one of the brief slides in the background portion of it, where it dates May 13th and 15th, council resolution to build a WRF. And I know the slide's brief to just cover a lot of ground, but you know, as I look at that, I mean, for the viewing audience and everything, I just want to make sure that as that resolution to build a Morro Bay Water Reclamation Facility, some of the larger scope of that resolution was, we were considering, and we still are considering under that resolution, that the CSD could be, is still an option for us as we proceed through this. We haven't, we haven't hit a closing date on that and the CSD, you know, we haven't had contact with them to the point where they're saying, hey, we've, we're complete with ours. But I just, I just want to make that subtle point when I looked at the slide for the viewing public. And then, as far as alternative sites, when we comment about alternative sites, we did our alternative site analysis in our options report. So, as we are discussing this MOU and getting this update tonight, we're also speaking to the, to the alternative sites analysis that has already been done. And I just want to make sure we're focusing on the analysis within the options report or are we starting to even expand that? And if we are, we're kind of opening another door and how do we, you know, we've kind of led with that options report. So, I just want to make sure that as we're looking at alternatives beyond the options report, maybe you can speak to how you intend to do that, if that's in fact what we're doing.
Let me start with that. So, we're absolutely starting with the options report, but it's been almost two years since the options report, since we did the options report. And so, we're going to quickly take a look and see if there are any new sites, especially in the Morro Valley, that may have, may have become.
Readily available.
Yeah. Risen to the surface and been found in that, in that period of time. And there are one or two, but the options report will certainly be the first stop.
Okay. So, if there are other alternatives that, you know, obviously, and it's, you know, it's smart, we've got to be looking at everything, will those, how soon will we be getting that kind of information? And will you be vetting that through council or will you probably have more of those conversations with the WRFCAC?
I think you're talking about a pretty dynamic process.
Yeah.
The way that we look at it, and I'm just going to talk in SEQA terms here, we start with a project. We, there are two tracks. There's obviously an MOU and we're trying to figure out if there's a way to work on Rancho Colina. But at the same time, whether or not, that was an open question. We, as the program management staff, working with staff and ultimately the environmental consultant, will be looking at, well, what are other optional sites that we could look at that meet the city's goals? We explored that already to some extent in the options report. As a result of the options report, we identified several sites that could meet the city's goal. So, that's an obvious place to start. What we would do then is work internally to say, well, maybe we What we would do then is work internally to say, well, maybe we hone in on one or two that make the most sense for further study. And when we talk about further study, right at the beginning of investigation, that's what I'm talking about right now. We haven't sent any crews anywhere to look at any site in any detail.
Sure, I understand.
But the point then would be, once we kind of agree, this is something we'd want to look at in the EIR, that would be something we'd bring forward in a scoping process for the EIR in conjunction with that, but perhaps even earlier than that, if there was a reason to start exploring that in advance. But that said, it will come forth in a public setting relative to the scoping of the EIR so that we all understand, we'll be looking at that and then following that path where it leads.
Thanks. And so as we're getting this MOU update and we're considering our options, if we, this is just informational, and hopefully it's, it's not too far off track, but it's both informational for council and for citizens that are tracking this rather closely. So had, had our site been Righetti, as an example, we would have been going through the same process exactly. And to what extent would the process of negotiating an MOU be different between the, you know, it doesn't have to be Righetti, but some other property? If we were, you know, we were focusing in on Righetti over Rancho Colina, how would we have done differently the MOU portion, which we're discussing tonight?
Well, I'll, I'll let Dave speak to that MOU portion, but in terms of the due diligence of the site, MOU being a part of that, the approach would be the same, more or less. The idea would be, you're still dealing with a property ownership situation, you'd be looking at the environmental constraints, you'd be going through the facility master planning process. And keep in mind that when we approached this programmatically, the facility master planning process was intentionally intended to look at the high-level issues first, the treatment issues, the lift station locations, things that have to do with infrastructure and basic technologies and programming that are applicable to any site. We do that in part because we know we have to deal with the property ownership issues, and that would have been true at Righetti or anywhere else. So process-wise, we wouldn't do it any differently. Now, if we were to start considering another site, it's really a question of at what point the council would wish to dive in a little bit more deeply relative to moving any kind of discussion at any other site forward. But right now, we're prepared to tell you, we're in a position to start analyzing another site, to the extent that you, you know, would like us to go forward, that's what we would do. But right now, that's where we're at.
Okay.
I would add, there's sort of two parts to this. One is the SEQA-driven alternative analysis, which would naturally requires us to take up sort of a holistic look or a fairly high-level look at alternatives. But also is the potential need for an optional site. And so two weeks ago, we discovered that the, that the particular piece of ground at Rancho Colina that, that we believed was, was where a WRF could be located, may not be available. And so because we're in negotiation with the property owner to determine what is available at Rancho Colina and under what conditions, there's, there's this additional sort of dynamic situation of, it could be, we could be moving to a point where not only are we doing, looking at alternatives from a SEQA perspective, but we might be investigating alternatives from an optional perspective if, and it could be that the, this is all could be, but if you ask the question, it could, it could be that the, that the items that raised Rancho Colina to be very high on the list, perhaps compared to other sites that were in the options report, that, that based on the current negotiation with the property owner, that, that some of those items have a different weighting in the, in the analysis, and that an alternate site or an optional site could actually be as good or better to Rancho Colina. So we're, as we go through the negotiation with the property owner, we're sort of assessing that, and we'll certainly be coming to, working amongst the staff and with the property owner, and perhaps going to the WRF CAC and coming to you as we go through that process.
Okay. And I know we're not in a discussion part of this, but I think one of the comments as far as emails and such from the public, as far as distinguishing our WRF site and a corp yard, and the concern of having, you know, intermingling funds for that. So, you know, I think the few emails that I received anyway, that's been responded to, but for those who may not have asked the question and are watching tonight, maybe our staff can respond to that, to clarify that the overall project, the goal is a water reclamation facility. As you said, Rob, there, there makes a lot of sense to have a corp yard, and probably that's why most cities incorporate, you know, those functions in that type of facility. But as we move forward on this, you know, our five-year timeline and the water rates that are being adjusted for this project only relates to the WRF. The, any ancillary type of component will be finally accounted for and not intermingled funds. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I think I have it. So the corp yard has several funds that operate out of there, or several functions that are funded by separate funds. General fund portion, streets, storm drains, that sort of thing, water operations and sewer operations. So water and sewer rate would, if there was a relocation of their facilities, would help to fund the, a relocation of, of those facilities anywhere we need to go. Eventually, regardless of where the corp yard is, even if we were to stay there, the buildings need to be reconstructed. The general fund needs to pay its share for those general fund functions. So the idea of co-locating is just a way to spread all those funds' dollars a little bit further.
Okay, thanks, Rob. I think that concludes my questions. At this point, I'll open for public comment for anybody that'd like to speak to the site, and please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back for discussion. And Christine, would you like to start us off?
Yes. So first, thanks to staff for turning this around in two weeks. We did request that at the end of our future agenda item at the last council meeting, and we have it back today and very well fleshed out, and I appreciate everyone's work on that, as I'm sure the rest of the council and the community does as well. You know, I think we got into a lot of interesting questions and have a lot more information, so I've just, during that, I made a few notes, and I think this is basically all I wanted to say, so thanks for the quick turnaround time. And just, you know, it's very difficult to negotiate for property in public. And if this was in our private lives, we'd be in a room somewhere, and it would be us and the person we're trying to buy, or the person that we're trying to sell to, and that would be, you know, basically it. But because of the nature of a public project and a public process, it's understandably clunky and awkward. So I think everyone's doing the best they can, considering that we are making a big negotiation for a large piece of property that will have a big infrastructure on it, piece of infrastructure. So I think just to remind all of us that that's what we're doing, and that's a challenge to do that in the public space, but it's also great for the public because they pretty much get to know, you know, a lot of information, all the information that's possibly public is known. And then along with that, I'd like to say that, you know, all along, Rancho Colina has been our preferred site. And part of the preferred site was having a willing seller, who reminded us that that's why that site was preferred, because it was a willing seller also on that site. I believe very strongly that City of Morro Bay and our staff and folks we've hired as additional staff to get us through this process are negotiating in good faith with the McElvein family. And just wanted to reconfirm that that's my intention as an individual council member, and it seems to be perhaps our intention moving forward, that we continue to negotiate in good faith and see if we can't make that preferred site a reality. So that would be it. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. John?
Thank you for the overview, and once again, the information regarding the process that you've gone through. I, I have received a fair amount of input from the community as well, and at times, it's, not at times, it's always important to make sure that information is transparently communicated openly to the public when concerns or trends are noted regarding concerns that are expressed by the community in our meetings. And so as a result of that, personally, my sense is, it was a bit of a surprise last meeting, or two weeks ago, when, when we found out that things weren't quite going according to plan. My sense is it's been a rather protracted process that we have been involved in to reach an MOU. I'm not really touting my own horn, but I mentioned it on a number of occasions, the import of having an MOU in place before moving significantly forward on a project for a number of reasons, all of which I will not go into, nor will I point fingers and try to blame staff for any of that. What I will say at this point in time is that every day is extremely costly. And the mayor spoke to clarification for the possible placement of some city-related maintenance facilities on the land, and that not getting mixed in, and the rates not being mixed in, I should say, to pay for that with the wastewater treatment facility or, or the reclamation facility. And I think we got the answer to that. That's not going to happen. I just want to say that, and I know you feel this, that this has to be an absolute priority, that you've got to move quickly to, in my mind, identify either that this is the site or it's not. I know you've given reassurances that we're not going to spend a dime more than we have to on alternative sites and the evaluation for that. I do realize at a high level, that has to occur anyway, the SEQA process, but in the interest of the community, being transparent with regard to costs and potential costs in the future, we owe it to them to come back with an answer to this question as quickly as possible. So I would beg you to rearrange whatever priorities you have, and if that means coming back to council, to ask for a rearrangement of those priorities, that you would feel comfortable doing that, to move this initiative forward and get us a, an MOU as quickly as possible. And I, I just think we owe that to the community, so. And thank you for all the work that you guys are doing. I appreciate it.
Thanks, John. Noah?
Yes, I'm also looking forward to making some final decisions on, on location and in the interim, coming up with, with an MOU that we can depend on and help us expedite the other components to this. I do want to point out that throughout this, we have noted that, both from the McElvein family and from our end, that there are some very strong shared interests and benefits. And that is also one of the reasons why we've looked out there at that site and recognized that there is an existing plant out there that needs to be addressed by, by the McElvein family and other needs as far as utilities go. So I think we're in a, we're in a position where that will help us with negotiating, and we're trying to approach this to be sensitive to their needs and to ours and see what we can come up with. So I completely agree, let's try as quickly as possible, work through this, and if we do need to restructure some of the priorities or be more clear about it, to get to a place where we can sign an agreement, I'm willing to do that.
Thank you. And I just want to look on the closing page, under conclusions of our staff report. In conjunction with my colleagues' comments, it, it has basically the recommendation and how we'd want to, to move forward, and, you know, just looking for, you know, hope to reach consensus that will result in a strong MOU that addresses city council goals and is fair to both sides. I highlighted that to strong with clear parameters. And maybe it goes without saying, but I just, you know, felt the need to verbalize that when I look at the conclusion. And I also have on my notes a timeline. Absolutely, I, you know, I think time is of the essence. I would agree with council member Haddings' comments on that. But understand that, and I trust that staff and the McElvein family, we will work expeditiously and diligently. I mean, certainly, time is of the essence, but there's some thoughtfulness that may take, and take place, and some, some considerations that might, you know, require just a few more days, other than just coming back in 24 hours or 24 days or 30 days. But I'm very mindful of the time as well, and, but I know that we still have to work through many different things. And I, you know, I trust that any priorities that need to be discussed, you know, we will, we'll have those conversations. Those are my only comments on this. And with that, unless there's any discussions from staff from this, it's just, it's just a receive and file. And if there's, if there's not clarity, or if there's any questions, then, you know, we're open to that. We're good to go. Okay. With that, we'll conclude item D1 and move on to item D2. Thank you very much, Dave and staff for that. Item D2 is consideration of a fee refund request in the amount of $3,298 for a residential remodel addition located at 938 Anchor, and that is the Sherrod family, and that's Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Mayor Irons, members of the council. You have before you this evening a request for a refund in the amount of $3,298 for permit, planning permit fees for the Sherrod remodel. The Sherrod's home is located at 938 Anchor. I'll give you a little bit of history on this. Back in August 19th of last year, the applicant received a planning commission approval for a variance request to allow a reduced rear yard setback of 7.56 feet where 10 is required, that was for a second-story addition. The variance allowed that second-story addition to match the non-conforming lower-floor setback. And then following that approval of the variance, the applicant, on October 7th, 2014, the applicant received approval of conditional use permit UP 0388. And that was for the overall remodel and addition. That was for a second-story addition of 614 square feet, second-floor deck addition of 130 square feet, and in a roof deck. The CUP was necessary because the project, the existing home, has a non-conforming front setback of 19.42 feet where 20 is required. And the addition was also exceeded 25% of the existing square footage necessitating the conditional use permit and planning commission review. Prior to that timeframe, the applicant had come into the city back in 2008 and received a building permit approval for the same development. The applicant hadn't changed his plans originally, came in, talked to planning staff at the time, and was told to proceed directly to building and that no conditional use permit or variance would be required. That permit was authorized, at least in part, by the planning manager at that time. That same person, interestingly enough, had reviewed similar applications prior to that time as an associate planner with the city, and made different findings that didn't match what the, what the 10-foot rear setback was, basically requiring the 10-foot rear setback on lots that are over 100 feet deep. Move fast forward from 2008 to September of 2010, the applicant didn't move forward or pull his building permits, and so those permits were allowed to expire. or pull his building permits, and so those permits were allowed to expire. The applicant has submitted a letter, and it's as part of the staff report package. I'll go over the basic four points of the letter and then provide staff responses to each of the points that are in the letter. Point one is, from the applicant, was that the project was found to be conforming by the planning manager in 2008, and again, that no CUP or variance was required. Fast forward to 2013, when they resubmitted their application to the city to get their building permit, current staff reviewed the application and found the existing home to be non-conforming when the design had not changed since 2008. Moving to the staff response on that, the applicant is correct. There were no, as I stated before, planning permits required in 2008. They were allowed to go directly to building permit process without need for discretionary permitting. In 2008, the building permit approval appears to have ignored, again, the non-conforming front setback and rear setback. Again, even just the front setback piece at 19.42 feet would have required, would have thrown the house into a non-conforming status. The addition was over that 25%, would have required the conditional use permit piece of that, regardless of whether there was some discrepancy related to the rear setback. Utilization of that 7.25-foot rear setback, based on current reading of the ordinance, required that application to now have a variance. Applicant's second point is that the city changed their interpretation. The applicant, again, didn't move forward because of, in 2008, because of the recession. Fast forward to that 2013, the city changed its interpretation of the city's R1 setback requirements, making that 2008 building permit plan non-conforming. The only option available to the applicant at that time was either they redesigned the plans, the plans they were giving us were for a building permit application, so had not just architectural component plans to it, but also the structural components as well, because they were ready to get a building permit. So revision of those is expensive. So the applicant instead pursued the variance and CUP process and paid that $3,298 so they could go through that process, so they didn't have to revise their structural plans. Staff response on that item is, again, it's unclear as to why that 2008 decision was made. It could have been that there was a different interpretation to the rear setback, although the person that was making it at the time had made different, you know, decisions regarding that same setback in a similar zone on other applications predating that. And then actually found out later during, while the Sherrod's project was moving through the process in 2008, had made different interpretations related to that setback as well, or at least had overseen interpretations that were different at that time. So, again, it's a little unclear what happened. It may have just simply been a mistake, or maybe it was truly a different interpretation. It's unclear to me at this point, it's become even more unclear over time. I would say to that, ultimately, the reason behind the change is somewhat irrelevant. Current staff reviewed the application, applied to correct standards in 2013, planning commission reviewed them and agreed that we had interpreted it correctly, that it did require a variance, and that it did require a conditional use permit. When we find mistakes, I would hope that everyone would want us to correct those mistakes wherever possible. And I would certainly think that you would not want us to continue those mistakes into the future. Once we found them, we should address them and then move projects forward in a consistent Continuing on to a response to point two, the applicant chose not to pursue the project that was permitted in 2008, allowed the building permits to expire in 2010. That decision had nothing to do with the city. By allowing the permit to expire, the applicant took the risk at that time that the project might not be approved in the future. Policies and interpretations do change over time. And again, lastly, I would say that there is no guaranteed, implied or otherwise, that a project would be approved in the future simply because it was approved previously. Each project, when it comes to our process, stands on its own. You allow your permit to expire, it gets rereviewed, it can get rereviewed by a planning commission, the planning commission can change, it can get rereviewed by a city council, the city council can change, and desires related to architecture and just about anything related to that project can change over time. The third point in the request deals with that inconsistent interpretation again. In August 5th, 2014, the planning commission agreed that the city inconsistently interpreted its own R1 setback standards. That was to the applicant's detriment, and eventually, as part of the reasoning, used that inconsistent interpretation as reasoning behind granting the variance and conditional use permit to the applicant. And then subsequently, PC, the planning commission, directed staff to draft an interpretation resolution so that this interpretation wasn't moved forward. And that interpretation relates to that R1 setback requirement where it's 10% of the lot depth, you have a lot that's, 10% of the lot depth with a maximum of 10-foot setback and minimum of six. And the thought process was maybe that it was being used as a range instead of actually 10% of the lot depth. Again, in looking at some of the records moving forward and what was going on at this time, that brings, it brings that interpretation and this sort of discussion and question a little bit, because it looks like the city was always interpreting it the same way. The exception was this project, and I don't know why that was made. Ultimately, we did return with a setback interpretation. It was adopted by the planning commission through resolution 20-14. That is included as an attachment, attachment five to the staff report. Moving on to the final point, applicant point four, again, the changing interpretation. The applicant points out that they were unfortunate to find themselves caught between a transition in staff where that interpretation changed from that 2008 staff to the 2013 staff. The one thing that remained constant was the R1 standards hadn't changed. It was just the application of what those R1 standards meant is what changed. And then, lastly, it was the city's inability to maintain that consistent interpretation that cost the Sherrod family the money that they're requesting to be refunded, because they thought they were going to walk in the door, go get a building permit, and just pay for that. And then ultimately, what we ended up saying is, no, you need a variance and a conditional use permit, that's the $3,200, $3,300 that they're requesting the refund on. Staff response on this is, again, I think it's sort of, regardless of the reason behind the interpretation that it changed between 2008 and 2013, is the fact that the city did realize and review the application currently and find that it did require that variance, it did require that conditional use permit. That was reviewed by the planning commission, they agreed with all of those findings. City did provide a path forward, though. He said, okay, we realize you have to do this, we did identify that they needed the CUP and variance. They were able to obtain that approval from the planning commission. And lastly, I think when you look at the cost of this application, because we've had so many public hearings on it, so much staff time spent on it, I would say the $3,200 or $3,300 they're asking for refund, we probably spent double that processing the application moving forward, probably almost triple. With that, staff has recommended that the applicant not receive the refund. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Scott. And we'll start off with questions, open up for public comment and the applicant, and then we'll bring it back for discussion. And John, you want to start us off with any questions? No questions? Noah? Christine? Okay. I do have one for you, Scott. So, the application expired. What's the opportunity to, what kind of opportunities the applicant have so it doesn't expire? Can you explain that?
So, what happened? The applicant received a letter from the city back in 2008 that says, your building permit's ready to issue, come get it. The applicant chose not to come get it. They could have come in and picked up the application, paid their building permit fee, and started some of the work. We would have considered that inauguration of the permit, and even if they didn't move forward, all they would have had to have done is call for inspections once every 180 days, or they could have asked for extensions. I'm not sure if the city, Mr. Sherrod would probably know, I'm not sure if the city said, did provide them 180-day extensions upon request for their building permit application, and then finally said, well, you haven't done anything in a year and a half, so we're going to expire it. That part's unclear in the record. I was looking, I was looking this morning in our permitting system, and it doesn't, that level of detail's not in it. So I don't know the answer to that. Again, Mr. Sherrod probably does, I mean, he was involved in it, so.
All right. Thank you. And with that, we'll open it for public comment, and then the applicant. Mike, were you going to come up and speak? Okay, yep, absolutely.
First, just before we start, just want to introduce my family. This is my wife Julie, I'm Mike Sherrod, and my little son Vincent. And Camille's on the way back, because more Bay cleaned house than long poke tonight. The girls volleyball sweep of all divisions, so we're good. You guys want to grab a seat and not make you uncomfortable? To answer, respond to the question regarding what happened in that intervening time, we really did try our best to keep that alive. There were a couple of things to recognize that we, right when that recession hit, and hit right at that worst time, we were reluctant because we had a construction load that was going to get tied into that, and that obligated us. We had a certain amount of time with the bank. So what we did before pulling the permit, which was paying that final fee and triggering the bank loan, we actually requested two extensions through the city to extend the permit process. We went as far as we could, I think we took it all the way down in 2010, and at that point, that was the limit. It was either at that point, pull the permit or let it expire. So we really had no choice. I mean, it's unfortunate, I mean, that recession was bad, and this is some of the outfall from that. But, I mean, back to our opportunity to speak, and I want to thank Mr. Graham for putting together a good staff report. I appreciate your time. I have a fair amount of information to share, so if I'm speaking quickly, I'll apologize in advance, but I do want to keep it to less than 10 minutes is what we're allocated, and I'll do my best. In fact, I have my timer, so I can keep track of myself as well. So Honorable Mayor, council members, you met my family, and we do live at 938 Anchor Street. And we are here tonight respectfully requesting reimbursement of the variance and CUP fees that we did pay as a result of the city's failure to consistently interpret and apply its own R1 standard to our project, as Mr. Graham mentioned. How did we get here? And I have a bit more information to fill in, I don't want to duplicate everything that Scott said. But we did, before we started the process, we wanted to make sure that we were going to be in the box with our project. So we convened a pre-application meeting. We brought to that meeting the survey of our site, which you can see on screen, which showed the house, the boundaries, and all the setbacks. We described the scope of our project, which, we had a small visualization of what we were looking at, which was simply to add above our existing garage and keep the cost down. So he looked at our survey, he looked at the scope that we had in front of us, and the planning director green-lighted our project, specifically saying that our project met all the setbacks, we wouldn't require a variance or a CUP. So the pre-app meeting represented to us the point of no return financially, because this is the point at which all subsequent decisions regarding project costs were based. And as you can see, the pre-app meeting was that critical decision point. If we had been informed at that meeting that we had non-conforming setbacks, we simply would have selected a project that brought the project into conformance. We had all the choice in the world at that point. We didn't set out to pursue a project that required a variance. In fact, we were going for the very opposite. In any case, we did move forward based on that advice and guidance provided by the planning director. We then established our budget, and we hired the appropriate professionals, put the architectural plans together, and we brought that back to the city, the planning department. And we went through plan review, not once, not twice, but three times. And each time, the planners reviewed our project and consistently agreed our project met all the setback requirements, all the other requirements for the building permit. The review process was capped off, as Mr. Graham mentioned, in 2009, we were granted the permit ready-to-issue status, and I've already discussed what happened, the economy And I think that clarifies, because the staff report does note that we just chose not to build, but it wasn't as simple as that. We just, and we wanted to have a chance to explain, and as the staff report correctly does point out, the recession wasn't the city's fault. We did move forward to 2013, November, we cleared the recession, we then, we went out, we secured our funding, we lined up the builder, we tightened up the plans again, brought that same project back, like I think a right-minded person would do, having just gone through this, figured we're going to come back with the same project and move this forward. And then a month later, in 2013, that's when we had the surprise of our life, was when we were, the planning staff said that we couldn't build our project, or couldn't permit our project because the rear yards, rear yard setback was now non-conforming. And if we wanted to move forward, we'd need to get a variance and a CUP, which is exactly what we set out not to do in the beginning. So what changed? I think Scott, Mr. Graham mentioned that the R1 zone didn't change, that's true, but neither did the project footprint, neither did the rear yard setback, and neither did any of the policies change in the city. That remained consistent all the way through. What became clear is that our project, is that for our project, the planning director and his staff in 2008, '09, and '10 interpreted the R1 zoning code to allow a range of 10 feet max to 6 foot minimum. Therefore, our rear yard setback was roughly eight feet and was conforming, and is evidenced by the approval of our project from the pre-app all the way through the review stage and even the permit issuance. What did change, though, is that in 2013, when we came back, planning staff interpreted the rear yard setback for our project differently than their predecessors did, and interpreted as a fixed number of 10 feet, therefore, non-conforming rear yard setback. We were scratching our head, how can this be? We did reach out to the planning, to the public works director and the senior interim, or interim senior planner at the time, to find out what had happened in that intervening And what emerged from that discovery process is that the R1 municipal code language itself was open to interpretation, as evidenced by the facts surrounding our predicament. And frankly, to actually check out this notion of ambiguity, the interim senior planner reached out to other staff planners in the area, and of the four that responded, three responded with that they interpreted to mean that it was a fixed number, 10% of lot depth. One of them responded that they would read that as a range. So we had a somewhat similar outcome from those findings. Finally, and I hope you had a chance to go back and listen to the August 5th, 2014 hearing, but the planning commissioners did concur that the R1 municipal zones language was open interpretation and directed, Mr. Graham, to bring back a memo correcting that ambiguity. In fact, as he mentioned, the findings for granting a variance were based totally, on the totally unique set of circumstances surrounding the process that we were subject to, and the inconsistent interpretation of the R1 setback with respect to our project. To get to the question of why we ended up pursuing the variance, though, I think it's important to clarify that. We didn't necessarily do it out of choice, we did it out of desperation. Our backs were up against a wall financially. We had expended every dollar we had saved to get to the point where we had the complete set of plans and the building set, basically. So the staff report notes that choices were offered to us, but the reality was that any other choice other than the variance would have resulted in a significant financial loss, because we'd spent the money already, based on that green-lighted project, the planning, from planning staff. So here are the four choices we received. First one is withdraw our project. That's a complete forfeiture of the investment with actually no gain on the back end, no new, no living space. We just forfeit the, you know, in round numbers, roughly 25,000 between the permit, the architectural and engineering fees to get to that point. Second option was to redesign and move the rear garage forward, which would have cost us about another 5,000 in architectural, another 20, 25 in construction cost, because we're literally tearing down the foundation of wall system and rebuilding back up, and reducing the amount of living space in the process. So the cost way outstrips the benefit in that case. And then the third option is- cost far outstrips the benefit. So the fourth option was the variance. And I use the dollar signs to indicate just graphically that there was this, you know, metrics we had to apply. How are we going to get out of this? We're in this position now, and this option, which ultimately cost us around $3,200, was the only option that preserved our investment and the right to develop the property as it was previously permitted. And again, had we been informed of any setback issues at the pre-application meeting, we would simply have spent our energy on developing a conforming project instead of investing in the current design. The only reason we ended up writing a check for the variance was because the city failed to maintain that consistent interpretation. And you know, it's interesting that the staff report does mention error and mistake quite a bit, but, and it's woven through the rebuttals to our letter, but it, the facts just don't seem to bear that out, at least as it applied to our lot. Based on all the investigations that we've done after the fact to figure out what happened, it's, and it's an unusual case, but it's quite clear that the previous planning director and his staff consistently and over an extended period of time interpreted the R1 setback as a range, and our project to be in full conformance. As to the time spent processing the project, we fully agree with staff report that city staff, and I might add the applicant, have spent a significant amount of time trying to resolve this issue. However, all the time spent is a direct result of the city's failure to maintain a consistent interpretation of its own standard. Look, we didn't set out to pursue a project that required a variance, and if the interpretation had been maintained, or if we had been advised differently at the pre-app meeting, we never would have wasted your time, and we'd still have $3,200 in our bank. So tonight, which is why we're here, is we, you know, given the truly unique set of facts surrounding our case, and I do think unique is true to form for here, we believe it's only fair and reasonable to request the reimbursement of the fees paid. And the Sherrod family thanks you. And I kept it under 10.
All right, Mike, thanks. And any questions? So hang on, let's see if we have any questions. Christine?
I might have a question, but it may be for staff.
Okay.
But actually, if I could ask, Mr. Sherrod, would you mind repeating? You have three, you had two ors at the end. Do you still have your comment, your written comments accessible? Yours, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Sherrod. I think you said or, it was like the very conclude, your concluding remarks, you had like two ors, or four points.
Oh, oh.
But it was before that. It was after this, and you said, there.
No, those were the...
No, that wasn't it. It was like the last two paragraphs of what you just said. You said options were this or this.
Oh, that's this. The, we had four choices in front of us to move the project for, well, four choices. One was to withdraw the project completely. Second was to move the rear garage wall forward. In other words, bring the project into conformance by tearing down and rebuilding. Three was to get a use permit for the existing structure to leave in place, and then move the upper, the second floor over the garage in to meet the setback. And then the fourth was the variance option. And is that clear?
You might have, like, your last three sentences. Do you know what they were?
Yeah, I do. I have them written down.
Oh, you didn't write them down? Oh, okay, great. Well, it sounded like you had totally read them. Okay, so you speak so well at the microphone. It's okay. Don't worry about it. I was just trying to get a gauge on what your options were.
Yeah.
Hmm? They are written?
Yeah.
So that the last, like, oh, okay. I thought you said you didn't. I'm sorry.
Well, in, regarding the choices, those were the choices. What we, what I was pointing out is that I was talking, I was referring to the time spent, and, you know, we're agreeing that, yeah, we've all spent a lot of time on this, and that, but it stems from the fact that there was an inability to maintain that initial interpretation. In other words, we didn't generate this. This came from the city. This was this inability to maintain that. And the second point I was making is that we never intended to pursue a project with a variance. That was the whole purpose of going to the city in the first place, is we didn't want to be here. And we did everything we possibly could have done to do our due diligence and research and get direction to avoid this, yet here we are. And it's funny, when you look back in time, had a couple of other things happened, or maybe, you know, different advice, none of us would be here. I may not have answered your direct question.
It's okay. I'm sorry. I was just, I was taking notes, and I just heard what you said, and I wasn't able to capture it. But yes, going back in time, maybe none of us would have been, you're right, I should have reassessed my own decisions in 2000, whatever it was. So that was my question for the applicant. And then also for Mr. Graham, or Mr. Levick as well, you have some history here with this as well. So to our knowledge, have we ever refunded a fee for a project that was approved?
Not to my knowledge.
We refund fees sometimes if a project is, somehow we refund, right, if we deny something?
Sometimes applicants will go through a process, go to a public hearing, realize the project's not going to get approved. They'll withdraw it, and we'll return some of the funds. Sometimes that's related to, because the funds, what you're paying for your application, sometimes it has, like Mike's project, it'll have a variance, a conditional use permit, it has an environmental piece to it, and sometimes we don't do the environmental piece, so we can refund that. Maybe we didn't spend all the time to use all of the money that was part of the fee, so we'll give partial refunds for things like that one. But usually, it's when they're, they withdraw on their application.
Okay, or they're denied.
Or it's denied, and we didn't, it had no chance, and kind of we took it forward and didn't do a whole lot of work, other than to say this thing's not compliant with city standards, and we spent, you know, a third of the application fee, and sometimes we'll refund that money, you know, if requested.
Okay, but not a project that has ultimately been approved and moving forward?
None that I'm aware of.
The only other nuance to that is if you appeal, you get, and you win that appeal, your appeal fee is refunded.
Okay.
But most of them are, what Scott described, is most of the refunds are very early on in the project. They've just, they've now understand what it costs to do something and withdraw almost before no work is done on it at all.
Okay, great. Thank you. I should have asked that earlier. I just forgot I wanted to ask it. Thanks. That would be all for questions.
Thanks, Christine. John?
Just one question, and it might be for both of you. I think, Mike, I believe you, Scott first made the statement that he wasn't quite sure why the original planning director made the decision that he did. And I believe you began to explain something about there was determined to be a range. Could you just reiterate what you had said about that? I just didn't get it all down.
Yeah, this happened when we came back to plant, to the planning department, and we're told, oh, you need a variance now. We're trying to figure out, well, what changed in here? So we, and that's why we reached back out to city staff to help us figure out. We're trying to work proactive, you know, collectively here, collaboratively, to see what happened. What emerged from that was the conclusion that there was an interpretation that was made. But what it daylighted, which was more importantly, more important, is that there was some ambiguity in the language, which is allowing the interpretation to occur. And that was supported by the commissioners, and that was discussed at length at the commission hearing, to the point where the direction was given back to the community development manager to issue back, I believe it was a memo that clarified the interpretation, to eliminate that alternate interpretation going forward.
That's correct. I mean, ultimately, what happened out of this is, and I would, I agree with everything Mike's saying. When we went to planning commission, other than the one anomaly that happened with the planning manager, but a couple of years prior to that, he was an associate planner, we pulled a couple of applications that he'd worked on, and he made completely different findings in those. It did appear to us that it was this range decision that was made for the setbacks, that it can be a maximum of 10 and six, and you can just have that range regardless of what the size of your lot is. And we thought that was the most likely scenario behind what happened. And that's what we brought forward to the planning commission. We had that discussion with them, and the planning commission gave us the direction to bring the memo back to make sure that didn't happen again, and that's what we did. And you have that, a copy of that in the staff report. But what we found out since Mike's project was approved in 2014, and even kind of while it was going on, we found a couple of examples when staff didn't do that during that timeframe. I mean, during that 2008 timeframe, when they didn't do that, it was stuff that we weren't aware of when we were going through the process with Mike's 2013 application, but became aware of later, just by researching other projects, you know, for other reasons. And that, well, this is during that same timeframe, and the city staff said, no, it's 10% of the lot depth, and here it is at 7 feet for a 70-foot deep lot, and here it is at 10 feet for a 100-foot deep lot. And so we started finding sort of inconsistencies with that concept or that idea that we had when we went to planning commission in 2014 with Mike's project.
And Councilmember Hedy, the other step that was taken too, and this was initiated by city staff, I appreciate that effort. The interim senior planner, I think I've got the title right, maybe, reached out to other planning professionals in the San Luis Obispo area to see how they interpreted. As I mentioned, of, only four responded, but of the four, we had three that were interpreted as the city does now, and one came back with, well, this could be interpreted as a range. So it was, that's when we began to settle in on that, okay, there was an interpretation happening. That daylighted the fact that there's some ambiguity in the language. And I guess, on the plus side of what we've gone through, that's now been taken care of.
Yeah. Interesting enough, what he said is true. The city did reach out. I was one of the planners that responded. And we had similar language in the code when I was in Pismo. It, you know, it was almost the same. It's identical.
So what was your interpretation?
It was a strict percent. But we had, I mean, to that end, and to, you know, what we're all kind of talking about right now, is we would have people come in and say, oh, you have a range. We can use that, right? Right, no, it's 10% of their lot depth, whatever that happens. It just has a maximum. If you had a 130-foot deep lot, you're, you'd still only have to set it back 10 feet. Or if you had something that was, in the city's instance, you had something that was 50 feet deep, well, your setback at the rear would still be 6 feet. That's the range that we have in Moro Bay from 6 to 10.
And just to be clear, that's the interpretation we never made. We reached out and started with the due diligence meeting, the pre-app meeting, to bring the project forward as to what we could do with the lot.
Any other questions? Noah?
Yes, I do have a couple. One, to Mr. Sherrod, we did meet back in 2013, back when Vincent was a foot shorter, so. And just curious to confirm, though, when I met, you talked about the different options that you would have looked at, and you outlined those again tonight, to achieve the goals that you guys needed with the modest expansion. And it sounded to me then that the design and the project you've pursued was the most sensible to what you needed to accomplish, as far as how it would fit with your existing structure and home, respect the neighbors, and then also with the construction costs. So the project that you did pursue and actually ended up needing the variance for was also the most sensible for the family.
Yeah, that's a correct, correct summary.
Okay. And then with planning commission interpretation that came out of, in part came out of this, would, I'm just confirming, that would have required a CUP and variance for this project. That's the conclusion that the planning commission arrived at as well, just to confirm.
Correct. The planning commission, we had the discussion with them. They thought the situation, they, the applicant found himself in was unfortunate and wished it hadn't happened, as it does staff. That's not a great situation to find yourself in.
Yeah.
But the planning commission did support, they said, nope, you are absolutely 100% correct, staff, now, today, not from 2008, but 2014. This is how it's supposed to be interpreted. We've never seen it interpreted another way. Planning commission's saying this. And so, but to make sure we don't have that issue where someone's trying to suggest that it's other than what we think it is today, come back with that interpretation memo, and we did that with a resolution, and they adopted it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I don't, I don't have any further questions. Thanks, Mike. With that, any other public comments? So public comments, for those who'd like to come and speak. Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. And I'll lead, I'll lead off for discussion on this as well. The slide isn't on there, but that's okay. You know, I'd agree, pretty unfortunate, as Scott, you explained, for staff and the applicant. I guess my question in regards to having, being able to apply to, and I didn't, I didn't really, maybe I didn't really close the loop on that, but being able to apply for an extension. So applied for an extension, but got to 2010, wasn't able to go beyond that. So maybe I'll open a public comment, because I didn't quite get that. I didn't quite get that.
So I think, I think what probably Mike was stating there is that he'd been working with the city up to that point. Like, in 2008, 2009, he got a ready-to-issue letter from the city. Your building permit's ready to issue. Come pay us the rest of your fees, and we're going to give you your building permit. He was looking to extend that timeframe, and certainly he can get up here and speak to that. And probably, it sounded like he made some requests for extensions of that, and the city granted a couple, and then said, hey, we can't do this indefinitely. And so drew the line in the sand at some point, said, you need to pull your building permit, or we're going to expire it. And we expired it, because he didn't pull it.
Okay.
Probably how it happened.
It wasn't right.
Okay.
Okay, all right, good.
That's not uncommon. That's a fairly common practice.
Sure, sure. Okay. Okay, well, I'll continue with some of my comments. And as the story and the timeline and the chronicle of how all this went, and I was looking through the staff report, which, Scott, great staff report for such an unfortunate discussion. But we get through applicant point one, staffer point, staff response point one, applicant point two, et cetera, et cetera. So you, you know, you've got your points in there. And the one point that continues for me is the failure to consistently interpret the ordinance. And through the discussions through tonight, there may have been an inconsistent interpretation, but it appears to me it's, it's not inconsistent. It was, it was misinterpreted just for this project. As I understand, we've kind of done some research. We didn't find anything previous. We didn't find any, so it's not like we've been seeing inconsistencies. Some got it, some didn't, some got it. It's like we haven't found anything consistent to say, hey, we're inconsistent. In fact, it seems like we have been inconsistent. What's inconsistent is just, is this particular project.
I've slowly, over time, come to be more in that side of things. I don't know that when we went to planning commission for the Sherrod's project, that's where I was at, because we kind of talked about, oh, it looks like, it looks like maybe it was an interpretation that was different than we have now. But when we, when I started to see more and more applications that we've looked back at, I don't see the same interpretation being used. It's always been the 10%. And those are for staff that was here at the same time then. So I don't, that's why I say I don't really know what happened in this one instance. It's almost like this is the only one that I could find that where the city did that.
Okay, so bar that, then, the overall project, as we're looking at some of the slides, the, one of the closing slides of options. So the options were withdraw the project all the way down to apply for the variance. And ultimately, the variance was the best value for the project overall.
Got him as approval.
As a look. So withdraw the project, that's not good. Redesign, you know, reconstruction costs are higher, CUP, et cetera. So, you know, based on that, applied for the variance, the fees for the variance were $3,298. He received the variance, was able to build the project. And just walking myself through that, I feel as though they got their product for what they paid for, no different than any other applicant that would be applying for a variance. I understand, you know, how we got there, but, you know, if it had been a project that did not, if, let's say, if we'd known this upfront, we would have redone the garage, it would have been a more expensive project, it seems to me, from that. But irregardless, we, the applicant got the project, paid the fee for the variance, and received I understand, you know, how we got there, but, you know, if it had been a project that did not, if, let's say, if we'd known this upfront, we would have redone the garage, it would have been a more expensive project, it seems to me, from that. But irregardless, we, the applicant got the project, paid the fee for the variance, and received the variance, as any other applicant would.
That's correct.
Okay. Those are my comments. I'm supporting, I'd be supportive of staff recommendation. And other discussion, look to my left, Christine.
Sure. And thank you also, Noah, for reminding me to ex parte. I've also spoken to the applicants and been on site, at least a year and a half, maybe a year and a half ago now, maybe for sure a year. So, it hasn't been recent, so I don't actually know if you've really started your project. But as I look at this, you know, this is a challenging, anytime we have an appeal like this, it's a challenging, challenging time for the council, because it's, of course, the idea of setting a precedent. So, what does that mean? If I set a precedent, what does that mean moving forward? So, I think that weighs on us a little bit. So, in thinking that, I understand the point to be made about consistency of our city's interpretations, because the city must be consistent, or we do lose credibility with the public who wants to develop, whether it's their home or a larger commercial development project. If we're not consistent in the way we interpret our processes, then that definitely puts projects at risk, and it puts the city at risk for being considered inconsistent. And that isn't something that we want to do. So, the way I've tried to look at this project is that, within the life of the permit that you were given for the original project, we were consistent in our interpretation of that permit. So, if things had fallen a different way, and you were able to build in '09, or even at the very end of 2010, then that, we didn't midstream change that for you. That process was acknowledged and moved forward. So, you at that point had no idea of all this other stuff you found out later, because what you were told by the people at the time was, yes, green light your project. So, that is how I'm looking at this case and the consistency of what you were told at that time. When the project, then, the opportunity to build did expire, that's when I look at it like, well, you know, all bets are off, because of the nature of the organization that a city is. Politically, things change every two years. Staff come and go consistently. That's just how people move through. So, I understand that if you're looking for consistency over a longer period of time in this particular project, then, you know, the city would, then we wouldn't have been consistent, because you came back again, and the exact same thing that you had would not have been approved. Okay? But, so that's how I'm looking at the consistency issue. I also think that ultimately, we all, and I think you all would agree as well, that we do want the best possible processes we can create. So, it may not make you feel any better, but morally, you do know that because of the process you went through, that the city did rectify and ensure that this interpretation wouldn't happen again. So, we did correct the wrong that was found in your particular project. So, it may not, you know, you can't necessarily take that to the bank, but it is something that, because you righted a wrong and it's been resolved, that's something that you did by pursuing it. You didn't have to bring it this far. You didn't have to pursue it as you did. But you did, and it, for the future, will be a better process for the city and for future applicants. Eventually, the project for your family was approved, as you had hoped. You know, I think that to refund a project that received a variance and a conditional use permit, and that eventually is moving forward, as you had hoped, it's just challenged for me to say that, okay, you know, we can refund that money. So, I just feel as though that would be the, I'm uncomfortable making that determination, simply because you did ultimately get the project that you wanted, and that you did, I think the "or" I was looking for was, there were other options that you were laying out for us, or if you had just had the ability to build the project when you had the green-lighted period of time. So, you know, there was, there was time that the project, as it stood, didn't need a variance, didn't need to come to planning commission, didn't need a conditional use permit, but for a multitude of reasons, very reasonable reasons, you weren't able to move forward and build. So, I look at it as, well, you know, you have that window of time, you were able to get some extensions. Had you moved forward, then, it would have been the home that you had wanted within that timeframe. Through no fault of the city or anyone else, that wasn't possible, so you needed to delay. And then, when you delayed, as I said, that green light period turned, you know, to yellow and then red, and then things can happen. So, that's just, I'm going to uphold staff recommendation with the caveat that, you know, if it makes, you know, any difference at all, you know, you did bring this forward to point out the things that had happened to you in your project, and it's been rectified, and hopefully wouldn't happen to people again. Ultimately, that's not the entire piece of it, because I, at least for me, I'm not going to vote to refund the fees, but it is something rather than nothing. So, thank you. Unless I hear something differently from my colleagues, that's where I'm staying there right now.
Thanks, Christine. John?
Yes, and I thank you very much, Scott, for an excellent response. And Mike and family, thank you for a great letter. A lot of time spent, a lot of research, and some well-thought-out comments and observations. I'm going to just say it simply, I also support the staff's recommendation, and here's the reason why. If today, that permit had been issued to you back in 2008, 2009, and it didn't cost you the $3,200 and some change, and staff came to us and said, during an audit, we found that there was a misinterpretation back in 2008 or '09, and we need to go back and collect the fee from the family, I would have difficulty. And so, given that, I can't, I can't support it, so.
Noah?
Yes, thank you. And I do really feel for what you've gone through, but I also have a strong feeling of relief for where you are now, because I think the ultimate goal and the primary objective for the project's been achieved. And I did watch very closely during the planning commission hearings and saw how much thought and time went into that, to create a pathway towards conclusion, and to get you a project that follows all the rules as they currently be applied. And I think that's important. I know your family watches our meetings quite often, and thinks about the larger perspective of what this, what this debate means and how we're approaching it. And I think I'm also just kind of thinking about this from square one. If this was square one today, where would you be? And you'd be at the CUP, and it sounds very much like you'd be there because of design as well. That's what I heard when we met. And it makes sense to me when I think about the house and your intent to respect the neighbors and so forth, which I wholeheartedly respect. So, I would have to agree with the other comments and support staff on this one.
All right. With that, we will take a motion on this, and, you know, I think we've worked through this well, and we extend our thanks to the Sherrod family and their work on this, and take a motion to approve staff recommendation to deny the refund.
So, moved.
Motion by Mr. Heding.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Smukler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 4-0. All right. Thanks very much. And with that, we will move on to item D3. Item D3 is authorization to consent to the bankruptcy estate in the matter of Charlotte Ellen Saulwasser or George Saulwasser to sell property located at 781 Market Avenue, including the parking lot, to the City of Moore Bay, and to participate in the bidding process as authorized by council. These are APNs number 066321-027 and 066-112-007. And with that, we'll move on to staff report on that. Mr. Buckingham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the purpose of this presentation is to get your direction for the city to purchase two parcels that you just described, 781 Market Street, which is DiStazio's restaurant, and the parking lot sort of adjacent and across Market Street from there. I'm going to read our recommendation, because it is in the form of a motion that staff recommends that you approve. So, staff recommends the city council authorize staff to consent to the bankruptcy estate of either George or Charlotte Saulwasser, moving forward with the motion to sell the 781 Market Avenue and adjacent parking lot to the city, and for staff to participate in the sale and bidding process as authorized by council. Alternatively, if you wanted to acquire the property but do it differently, you could wait for another party to purchase the property, and then enforce the deed of trust that's in place for the installation of an elevator, or we could decide, you could decide not to acquire the property. The, on the screen is a picture of what property we'll be talking about here in a minute. In fact, I'll just leave it up there. So, in blue is the Front Street parking lot. In red, to its right, is the DiStazio's building on the bluff there. That has a mark of $1.2 million on it for reference, and that was a recent appraisal for that piece of property. And then, you see the red square to the bottom right, with a recently appraised value of $500,000. I'm actually just going to leave that up there. Well, here, I know where we are in the city, of course, but that's a picture of the parking lot with DiStazio's behind it and the view behind that. So, a brief background, in 2003, the city purchased all three of those parcels for about $2.6 million. In 2011, the city sold two of those parcels, the two in red, the restaurant and the parking lot, to George Saulwasser for $1.5 million and the promise to build an elevator. The city financed that deal with a note for about $1.25 million on a note, and then got some upfront cash for the balance. The first two years of that loan were interest only. The following years were principal and interest, and then there is a balloon payment of a significant amount of money due in 2020, the balance of the loan. There's currently just about $1.2 million remaining on the loan. So, the city's current interest in the property is about $1.7 million. That's the $1.2 million note that we hold, and the promise for someone to build an elevator priced at $500,000 or more. The current situation is that the Saulwasser estate is subject to two separate bankruptcies. And the sale of the property to the current tenant recently fell through. The city became involved in that negotiation due to the performance deed of trust on the property for the elevator. The city council met in closed session to address that bankruptcy sale. You'll recall that. And the city has the opportunity now to purchase that property for $150,000 out of pocket, plus our current note of $1.2 million. So, we would forego what's due us, the $1.2 million on the note that we hold, take $150,000 sort of out of pocket, out of the current year budget. So, the total city investment to gain, or to acquire the property now, would be a total of $1.35 million. That's $1.2 million on the note, and then $150,000 out of pocket. The elevator requirement would remain, but the city has a number of options of how to work that. And then, the property was recently appraised for $1.75 million. And those are those numbers that I showed you on the graphic. So, the, I'll just keep going. Some purchase considerations. The future of the property is, right now, unknown. It's in bankruptcy. And purchase by the city provides some certainty for adjacent business, for the tenant there, for other businesses, and provides some opportunity for the city. An outright purchase avoids any costs associated with foreclosure on that property. The short term, the city would gain about 40 parking spaces, looks like 39, to be precise, in that parking lot between the downtown and the Embarcadero. And one of your FY15 objectives with significant business owner interest is to acquire city parking in the downtown Embarcadero region. And in short term, we would also quickly negotiate a fair and appropriate lease with the current tenant. In the longer term, reasons for acquiring the property is that it would provide the city much broader latitude in the upcoming conceptual design and possible new construction of a new centennial parkway. And also provides the city better control of long-term investment or revitalization of that central part of the downtown waterfront zone. The property is really almost in the geographical center of the conjoining of the waterfront and downtown. Some financial considerations. As noted, the property sold in 2011 for $1.5 million and the promise of an elevator, so perhaps it was valued then at about $1.9 million. The city, if the city were to acquire the property for $150,000 out of pocket and the note, our total requirement would be 1.3, or total investment would be $1.35 million plus the value of an elevator station. I noted the property recently appraised for $1.75 million. Okay, there are adequate unspent funds in the city's 2015-16 budget. The one-time investment list specifically, there are adequate funds on that to cover the $150,000 purchase. In fact, one item on your one-time investment priority list is parking lot acquisition. And we had, you had allocated or considered up to $120,000 for parking lot acquisition. So, this is something that was on your radar, and there is, in fact, unspent money at this point in the fiscal year in the $900,000 of one-time investment money that you approved. If you purchase this, we purchase this, the staff will get you to reprioritize that budget guidance at our mid-year budget review in January. So, a statement now is, there is money in the budget to be able to do this, and then we'll come back to you to reprioritize those projects. And by that point, some of those projects may have fallen off the radar, some of those projects may have come in below our estimate, and so you'll have an opportunity to reprioritize them. And also, there, we did anticipate a $99,000 payment in December on this, as one of Mr. Saulwasser's payments on the lease. Anticipated rents would replace a, not all of that, but a majority of that. And so, and that money was to go into the short-term maintenance fund. That fund is healthy right now. So, what I'm saying is, it would have an impact on the current budget year, but it is certainly something that is, we could, we could take now and work through without any concerns during our mid-year budget review with you. So, the staff recommendation is there again. I read it previously, but the recommendation is that you make a motion and pass this for the city to acquire those two parcels, hopefully, and that the timeline would be, we probably have a couple of months to work with a bankruptcy court, and then a month or so in escrow, if everything goes smoothly. There's probably a three to six-month process. And there is a motion, if you choose to use it. That completes my presentation.
Thanks, Mr. Buckingham. And we'll go to questions, and then public comment back for discussion. Quick question. Could you just elaborate a little bit about property negotiations? So, we went through some, you know, closed session discussion on property negotiations. We're in open session now through this. And can you just maybe elaborate a little bit on property negotiations and why we're here, and maybe what we're limited to, and if there's any changes to this, or any further negotiations, what we would have to do as a council?
I'm hesitant, because I'm not sure what you meant by if there's any changes to this. So, I'm going to answer it the way I think you were asking.
Okay. All right.
The council considered, the council has a real property interest in this piece of property, because it has a deed of property because it has a deed of trust guaranteeing both a loan and a, a performance deed of trust guaranteeing that the elevator is going to be built. The project went into bankruptcy, I mean, the, the property owner went into bankruptcy, and this was one of the assets in the bankruptcy. The property was going to be purchased through the bankruptcy by someone else, and the city made it clear through the bankruptcy, we received notice of the bankruptcy process because of those interests. And because we received that notice, when we were made aware of the bankruptcy, we came to the council to let them know what their options were. And one option was to basically sit on your rights that you have as the deed of trust holder for the money and for the performance of the elevator. And we advised the potential buyer of that and their attorney throughout the entire process that the city was not going to give up any of its rights. It wanted its money and it wanted the elevator. That got almost to the last moment, and the person who was purchasing the property's financing bank said to the city, well, we don't want to loan the money on this property to make that purchase unless you give up your deed of trust that you don't, for the elevator. They were willing to pay the money off, but they didn't want the deed of trust for the elevator. So the discussion we had with the council is, what do you want to do? And the council said, we want the elevator. Because of that, that deal went away because there was no financing, which left you with the possibility of purchasing the property because you have a $1.2 million deed of trust and a $500,000-plus dollar elevator obligation on that property. So if someone wants to buy that property, they're going to have to come up with at least $1.7 million, if not more, to buy it so that you can't keep it. And so during the negotiation, the council said, gee, let's see if we can purchase it. And so we went through the, the closed session discussion, and now what we're bringing to you is, the little confusion here is because we're in bankruptcy court. If you think of it as typically what happens is we're negotiating closed session because we don't want to be negotiating in open session, letting people know what our bottom lines are, this sort of defeats the purpose of negotiation.
Right.
That's why the law allows you to negotiate in closed session. Once you've reached a point of a deal, we then bring on public session the purchase agreement, and you approve it in, in public. Because this is in bankruptcy court, there's, it's a little more complex. There isn't a, ultimately, there'll be a purchase agreement, but the first steps we have to go through is filing something in court that allows the court to approve that purchase. So what you're doing is you're right now approving that document being filed in court by the other, we, we're not spending the money to file the court filing. The other side's going to do that because they know they're going to get some money out of this, not all the money the bank owes, is owed from the Solwassers, but some money. And so they've decided, okay, they're willing to do that, and for the $150,000. So that's what you're approving, is you're authorizing the, your attorneys to tell the bank's attorneys, we're supportive of a motion, we're willing to go forward and, and follow through on the purchase if the bank, if the bankruptcy court approves that sale. If during the process, someone comes in and tries to bid more than one point, so it'd be one point, let's see, 1.7 plus 150, so what, if someone comes in and wants to bid more than $1.9 million, maybe we may have to come back to you, maybe we won't, depends on what discussions we had in closed session, which I'm not going to talk about.
Right.
Then we may have to do something else. But the likelihood of someone coming in and paying that amount of money is not likely because, remember, you still have a deed of trust that says they have to build an elevator, which is what caused it to blow up in the first place. Did that answer your question?
Yep, yeah, that's good. Thank you. Those are my questions. Christine?
Thanks, great explanation, and appreciate that info. Basic question, have we had, did, I guess, Mr. Buckingham, you're probably the likely person, have you had a chance to speak to the current tenant, and this is in public session now, but did you have a chance maybe prior to tonight to just touch base, because I'm sure it's better to hear about that perhaps? Well, hopefully you did.
Absolutely. I went to visit Mr. McMillan at Destazios about four hours before he released the staff report because I wanted him to hear about it for me and not in the staff report. And he, he was not surprised, he was tracking this all along because his attorney's been tangentially involved in all of this. And, and I'm very hopeful that we will be able to reach a, a lease agreement with him quite quickly for him to keep Destazios in that building for an appropriate period of time.
Okay, thanks for the outreach.
Thanks, Christine. John?
No questions, thank you.
No, none, okay. Well, that will open for public comment. For anybody that'd like to speak to this item, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion. And John, you want to start us off for any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Pony, Penoni, for a great overview and explanation of the process. I appreciate that. I've had the opportunity to read the details and also look at the spreadsheet over, over the life of the project and the loan itself, and feel very comfortable with the recommendation of staff. Thank you for a very clear, succinct explanation, but also thank you for being thoughtful enough to, to reach out to Mr. McMillan who, and Christine, thank you for asking that, but I want to reiterate it, how important that is, and I appreciate you thoughtfully thinking about that and contacting him prior. So I, I am in support of this and would be ready to move it when ready.
Thanks, Noah.
Yes, thank you, and just knowing how uncomfortable and traumatic this process probably has been for the Solwasser family as well as Mr. McMillan and his family, from meeting with them. Sad that that's how they, this is affecting them, but I also, I think we're all trying to look at this from the city's perspective and the long-term benefits that this, this property could bring, including the parking. So I am in support as well.
Christine, then? Okay. With that, I would agree with staff recommendation, a lot of moving parts to this. Thanks for bringing it to our attention and the diligence and, and work on the staff report on all levels. With that, I take a motion to authorize the consent to the bankruptcy estate in the matter of Charlotte Ellen Solwasser and George Solwasser to sell property located at 781 Market Avenue, including the parking lot, to the City of Moray Bay and to participate in the bidding process as authorized by council. APNs number 006321027 and 00612-007. And that would be the motion. So we have motion and a second, second by Ms. Johnson. And any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 4-0. Okay, that concludes our new business section, and we're moving on to, we're moving, we're moving back to item.
Back to the future.
We've, we've concluded all the items on our agenda with the exception of A3. We're going to move back to item A3. Okay. Good. Okay, so item A3 is, and I'll slip back, that item A3 is a approval of California Department of Fish and Wildlife draft stream bed alteration agreement.
I'll be just changing your presentations here.
Danny Tobe.
That's okay. I thought we might want to talk about this, so I put a couple of slides together that it would help us through the process. Got a couple of slides together. Yeah. Of course, I'm going to have to turn around because I forgot to put them on my iPad. I apologize for that. This item is to execute an agreement with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, authorize an agreement for a stream bed alter, alter, stream bed alteration agreement. And I went through the five Ws to just guide us through this process. What happened? The city violated sections of the Fish and Game Code in removing vegetation from several creeks in Moray Bay, and the Fish and Game Code codified in section 1600, 1600 and 1603 of the Fish and Game Code is what we violated. Basically, we had a 1988 agreement that was extended with a 2005 memorandum. We would have been okay if we would have complied with what the 1988 agreement said. We went outside the limits of that agreement, removed more vegetation than we were authorized and in areas of those creeks that we weren't authorized to go into. And the creeks were Willow, Moro Creek, Willow Camp Creek, Alva Paul Creek, and no and unnamed creeks. The work was performed between August and October of 2014, so it was within the time period. It was reported to Fish and Game in January of 2015. The notice violation was delivered to the city in March 2015. We worked with the Fish and Game biologist and our own biologist preparing a restoration plan, late spring, early summer, and we received the draft stream bed alteration agreement August 2015, which is, is part of this package. Why? Already kind of went over this, 1988 agreement allowed work in creeks at specified locations and specified times. We met the time requirements, we did not meet the locational requirements. We had a 2005 extension, I was, can you continue work until a new agreement was made? There's a slight dispute with Fish and Game over that. They say stream bed alteration agreements only last for five years, so we should have come back to you in 2010 and made you get a new permit, or you should have come to us. I think this fell through the cracks on both sides. Work in 2014 went on beyond the allowances geographically and the amount of removals. So we were allowed to prune vegetation, we removed whole trees. Solution, enter in the stream bed alteration agreement, Christine, to repair the relationship, perform the vegetation work that we have outlined in, by Althausen Mead, apply for a new stream bed alteration agreement for maintenance of the creeks. Right now, we can't get into any of our creeks and do any vegetation management currently. And make sure that we notify Fish and Game and work with them on continuing work. I think it's been just sloppy practice in the past, not working very closely with Fish and Game, you know, get noticed by the warden, oh, you're, you're out there working. You know, we would notify them if we needed to work outside the limit, time limits of our permit, but we would never give them a courtesy call to let them know that we're working the creek. And I think, you know, for me, are on out, we need to correct that bad habits. I think that's it for my presentation. So we're asking city council to approve this stream bed alteration agreement. I would execute it and work with Fish and Game on the habitat restoration plan. We have two years to install the plant material. We need to, or little under two years, I think by, it's in the staff report, let me refresh my memory, December of 2016, we have to have the plant material installed, then we have a five-year maintenance period to make sure that it's viable. Cost-wise, probably spending with the cost incurred to date, about $60,000 over the next five years to make this go. And we're not just planting willows there, willows, cottonwood, and some shrubby vegetation also, in addition, some understory vegetation, some blackberry, coffee berry to diversify that habitat. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate it.
Mayor, I'm, if I can just make one addition, that the city has perhaps, over time, not worked exceptionally closely with some of our regulating agencies, and we are working very hard to correct that. I'd point to our relationship with the Coastal Commission. There was a period of time where perhaps we would write a general plan without ever talking to Coastal and send it to them and say, here you go, approve it. That didn't work, and as you know, we're working very closely with Coastal and have a great relationship with them now. So we're, we're committed to working closely with especially the state regulating agencies and going forward, and we are doing that.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Buckingham. And I didn't pull this to call out staff in particular on this, but it, to me, I just, there were some talking points and some questions that I just wanted to, to get through, and you know, that's why I reached out to Mr. Buckingham and, and just talked through, you know, pulling this item and going through some of my questions and, and concerns. And to, great point to echo, you know, relationships, and interestingly, had a long conversation with Scott Graham, our community development manager today, over our general plan, LCP update, and the relationship that we have with Coastal Commission. And, correct, we have a completely different relationship with the Coastal Commission in, in a very, very positive way. I'll be attending Coastal Commission hearing, forgive me, I didn't put that on on my announcement, November 6, there's a sea level rise workshop, and there's also a coastal issues working group that I'll report back to council what becomes of that. But within the last week, the, they reached out for someone from our region to participate in that. I'm not, sorry for me to get off track a little bit, but once I got there, I thought I just closed the loop on it, but Mayor Higginbotham from this region and myself were invited, so definitely we'll be reporting back on that. But at any rate, part of that discussion really amplified and brought to light the relationship that we have with our Coastal Commission staff. So truly wanted to recognize that. And, and this particular staff report, now I just want to get into some of the questions I had with that. And in particular, so we, we've, we've done a restoration, basically, we're required to do a restoration plan for this. So the plantings that you alluded to as far as the willows and what other alternative plantings we can do are the result of that plan, and it's not something that we're just choosing to do, but it's spelled out specifically in this particular plan.
Yes, we worked with biologist Althausen Mead, who, on consultation with Fish and Game, prepared a revegetation plan.
Okay. And so, so the five years seems to be the number, so this particular plan is good for five years after it's implemented, and, you know, we'll establish that relationship and that contact with Fish and Game as we go into any of our creek, stream beds, per this plan, we'll be able to go in there, perform maintenance, we've got a plan, we're covered, they're going to understand that. There may be another MOU that's addressed as well during this, this process?
So this plan is only for the damage that was caused by our overzealous removals. We have to apply for a maintenance stream bed alteration agreement. They got a, out of the, they called them MOUs, now they're back to their stream bed alteration agreement name for them. In effect, it's the same as the MOU that we added in the past, but we'll need to, they will not take an application for us until we commence work on this. will not take an application for us until we commence work on this revegetation plan. So they're not going to talk to us about maintenance until they can see effort moving forward and talking with their biologists, they see effort moving forward with us signing the agreement, and we agree with their plan. And we went back and forth on, on language, worked with Joe's office to try to soften some of the language and.
Didn't get anywhere, but we tried it.
We tried, we didn't get anywhere, yes. They don't change any of their language in their stream bed. I don't know why they offered it up to us, but.
And just for those that may not be attentive to the staff report, but how's Fish and Wildlife responding? Because there were some gaps, there were some city correspondents reaching out to Fish and Wildlife to address the dated MOU that existed in 1988, and there were some gaps on behalf of the Fish and Wildlife. So is that, were they going through some staffing issues or things like that?
I think everybody was going through some staffing issues. I don't know that we should argue that it's their fault that we over-trimmed, but I think there were issues on both, both sides of the fence. I think there's enough errors that were made on both sides.
Okay. Those are all the questions I, I had.
John? The, the time period that this occurred initially, what was, I guess, just my, only one question is, the complete time period this, this involved?
Let me, I'll take.
If you could, I just.
So the, the clearing that took place that caused this notice of violation was August, September, and the first week of October of last year. And then the, and it was that the city contracted with the California Conservation Corps to do the work, gave them some parameters, set them loose, they operated under the city's guidance, and then they were complete the first week of October, and then there was a complaint in January, and we received the notice of violation in March.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you.
Noah? Christine? No? Okay, thanks. I will open for public comment. I'm not seeing anybody out in the audience, so I'll close public comment, bring it back to, to council. And just thanks for covering that and some of the questions that I had for that, as well as the rest of council. With that, I would make staff recommendation to approve the California Department of Fish and Wildlife draft stream bed alteration agreement.
Actually had a comment. Yeah, I'll second it for discussion.
All right, thank you. So I have motion by Mayor Irons, second by Councilmember Smuckler, and then discussion.
Yeah, I do, I'm glad that this is before us. I was unhappy with how the, the work was carried out, particularly at Del Mar. I was actually quite shocked at, at how the work was performed there and, and the impacts. So I think we do owe the creek there and, and these other spots, attention, and the plan, I think, is a good one. I think, to be fair to staff, it was under the previous maintenance division within the recreation division rather than Public Works. And so Mr. Livick and his team are, are negotiating through something that they didn't have very much of any involvement in planning. So I think that's important for people to realize, and of course, Mr. Buckingham wasn't on board when most of this was accomplished. So I was complaining to him after the fact, but he didn't really have much he could do about it. So, you know, going forward, I do have some concerns about how we can be more environmentally sensitive with how we manage our open space and parks, and we have talked about some things to do that. I think working more closely with the, with the regulators, that's clearly one of the things they're there to do, is to help us and ensure that we are respecting the environment. So that being said, this is something we have to move on from, and, and I was glad seeing the plan, there's clear recognition that there are some very strong and serious flood potential. There is flood potential in this area and that this work isn't going to be, started to be implemented, and then, you know, major potential Onino floods would wipe it out. A lot of it strategically focused on the banks and so forth, out of the floodplain. So that'll be a good thing, along with the additional biodiversity that I don't see existing currently.
Any further discussion? Thanks for clarifying that and bringing up those points, and as we said, you know, this was clarification point, not necessarily call out staff whatsoever, so thanks for, for clarifying that, Noah. And with that, take a, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 4-0. And that concludes our agenda, and we'll move on to council declaration of future agenda items. And any, any future agenda items? Mr. Smuckler?
Yes, I do have one. Been a long time coming. I would like to schedule an, an update and review of the Volunteer Senior Transportation Project. We have, we're very close to the Senior Citizens Incorporated approving, their board approving a draft MOU and agreement to operate and facilitate the, the senior transportation project and request that it come on the December 8th agenda, if possible. They'll be approving the, and reviewing and approving the draft, most likely at their November meeting. So if we can get it on the December 8th, that would be excellent, but understand there's other things in line.
So update and review of the senior transportation?
More than that, it'd be actually approval of the MOU and agreement, or at least, you know, the opportunity to approve and, and sign on that.
Yeah, I would support that. I know they were working hard.
Yes, they have.
And it's been a while, and it's, you know, it's a good, good thing to see come back.
Yes.
And that would be from Public Works.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm sure they'll discuss the timing, if it can come back in December, but certainly it'd be great to get it back when, you know, as, as appropriate.
Yep. I would, I would support as well, and I, I think with the discussion of, you know, trying to get it on December 8th, if that's, if we can do that and being sensitive to the, you know, our other priorities and, you know, can have those discussions with Dave as we set the agenda. Yep.
And that was my only concern, was the other priorities that you have going on and making sure we have that.
Yeah.
You got it.
Yeah.
I have a car.
Yeah. Okay, if that's, if that's it, then.
Just one reminder, if I can.
Sure.
Fortunately, I'm on vacation. I think I notified appropriate staff from November 1st through the 14th.
On vacation? You're not going to be here on the 10th? Oh, I'll miss you. You want to call in?
And that was my point. If you, no, if you needed me to, I could call in.
No, it's okay.
This was, this was planned a year ago, so.
Yeah, no, no, vacation's important.
I would have otherwise certainly planned it around this group.
You can't trust us.
Okay.
That means we'll be three.
There's, there's good internet in Venice.
No, don't rub it in.
Maybe you could stream the meeting from a gondola.
You say playing tennis?
Okay. All right, so we're getting to the point where, are any other, any comments? Okay. All right, good, we got future agenda items down. Dana, I think we're good on that. Thank you. And our next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 10th, 2015, at 6:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial Hour, located right here at 29 Serv Street, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.